Just hope, yeah, there you go.
Good morning.
Punch it again, it's red.
Hey, I got it.
Good morning. Is Trey gonna come?
Yeah.
Okay. Good morning, Renee.
Yeah.
This is a regular meeting in public hearing being held in the architectural review and planning board of the town of Gulfstream, Florida. On Thursday, November 18th, 2021, at 8:30 a.m. In the William S. Coe Jr. Commissioned Chambers of the Town Hall, 100 Seabrook Gulfstream, Florida.
Thank you, Rita. Let's call the meeting to order. Rita, would you do a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Doggery?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Yeah.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Roach?
Here.
Chairman Smith?
Here.
And let the record show that we have two absences. Mr. Cannonfield, who is the other alternate, and Malcolm Murphy, who is the vice chair.
Thank you, Rita. You all had the minutes from last month's meeting before this meeting. Does anyone have any recommendations for changes, revisions, et cetera? Not going to have a motion to dispense with the reading.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded, Rita?
Mr. Doggery?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
And Chairman Smith?
Yes. Does anyone have any additions, withdrawals, deferrals, or arrangements to the agenda items as presented? Thank you. Quickly, under announcements, you see we have the next five monthly meetings are stated here. Remember that the December meeting has been moved to December 16th. So as to avoid the Christmas holiday, the others are the regular scheduled dates. Again, if you know you aren't going to be able to attend any of those meetings, the sooner you let Renee or Rita know, the better. I guess we can now begin with the public hearing portion of the meeting. Does anyone have any ex parte communication to disclose?
No.
Thank you. Rita, would you administer the oath? Oath?
Anyone that intends to speak during this meeting, please stand, please squirm. Please grab hands, or tell the truth, all truths, let them bless the truth, all we got. And before you leave, make sure that Renee has your name.
Thank you. The first application up is going to be presented by Benjamin Shire, architect. Would you please come up and state your name?
Hi, my name is Benjamin Shire. I'm with Affinity Architects, and I'm here to present the house 588 Danning Road that the Davises would like to build. And before I go any further, I'm masked today. I'm vaccinated and I'm boosted, but in the utmost of caution. That's why I'm continuing to wear a mask during these historic times. Yeah, we ready to go?
Yes, please proceed.
We're proposing a new two-story Anglo-Caribbean house. Thank you. Very good. This is the existing house that's on the site. It's a wonderful site. It's got water on three sides. Staff has been tremendous in terms of helping us go through and vet the issues regarding setbacks in the house is all as of right according to the development regulations for the town of Gulfstream. The intent is to remove the existing home. Go to the next sheet. Okay, at the entrance to the site, there's an existing site wall with a little gate in it, and our intention is actually to renovate this site wall. We want to make sure to get permission for that because it's actually in a non-conforming location, but we would like to keep it and renovate it. And then the lower left-hand portion, you'll notice that the one of the piers tilted a little bit, so that one, we may have to take down and reconstruct in order to make it happen. And I just want the council members to be, the members of the commission to be aware of that. Next slide, please. Okay, this sheet has some of our site data in the upper left-hand corner. And I'm just gonna go through it. The house is going to be a square footage of 8,700 square feet, 8,720 is allowed. The second floor area is allowed to be 50% of the first floor. We're only doing 43%. Lot coverage is allowed to be 25%, but we're only doing 19.8%. The landscape area requires a minimum of 40%, and Mr. Peterson will be presenting the landscape portion to be able to confirm that we are going with 82%. We're over double the amount of landscape area required. And as for building height, the building is allowed to be 35 feet high, and to the top of the roof, we're going only 28 feet 10 inches, which is 5 feet 2 inches below the allowable height. And there's a chimney that's going to about 30 feet high as well, which is also below the allowable height. The finished floor elevation to meet the current FEMA regulations will be at 7.5 feet NAVD. The next slide, please. We're trying to take advantage of the views to the left, who would be the southwest, so there's a nice long view up the intercoastal waterway. And the ground floor has three parking spaces in the garage, a large living area, master bedroom, suite and office, and a family room area in the northeast, northwest corner. The next slide is, would be good to see. And then on the second floor, there are three bedrooms, a play area, and then above the garage, there's a guest suite as well. This is the roof plan, and in the Anglo-Caribbean style, it's broken down into a series of masses, sort of to break down the massive house. It's like a little village almost. Next slide, please. This is what would be the front elevation of the house. In the center there is the front door of the house. We have windows there. We're proposing a stucco base, some windows with a blue frame, a light blue frame on it, which we have samples here today for the color, and then a cedar shake, single shingle roof. This is a view where we see the garage doors from the, from the north side. The next slide, please. This is the view looking from the north, from the southwest at the house as viewed from the water. Rita was kind enough to call yesterday that there had been a concern about how much opening there was on this portion of the side. The code allows for 40% opening on this side, and we did calculations, and we have, we have data here to show in graphic form that we're at 30.4%. So we are almost 10% below the allowable amount. Next slide, please. The view from the southeast, thank you. Next slide, please. And then we have some perspectives of the house. The upper left-hand corner is a view seen through the existing site walls that are going to be retained, looking towards the front door. The next image on the right is a view towards the front door. And we can scroll down so we can see the bottom half of this page, please. This is on the lower left is the view as seen from the water coming, as one would be going north on the intercoastal waterway. And on the right is looking directly east on the, towards the guest house, the guest room that's above the family room on the first level. And then here we have some aerial perspectives to show the relationship between the house to the unique peninsula-like property. Where you have the two-story main body of the house in the center there, the wing to the left in this image is the master suite and a guest bedroom and another guest bedroom. And this portion to the right, the lower portion is the garage, and in the back is the family room with the guest room above. The next image below, the lower level, and then this is viewed from the south, is if you are flying in a helicopter. Where on the right-hand portion is again the master suite and one of the bedrooms. In the center portion on a 45-degree angle is the main body of the house. It's two stories. And on the left portion is the garage, which is the one-story portion and the two-story portion with the guest room above. And the next image, please. And this brings us to the landscape portion of the presentation, and if you want, we can proceed with that.
The existing site has a number of trees on it currently, a lot of palms, royal palms, cabbage palms, number of coconut palms on the back, two sides. There is a large mahogany tree in the northwest corner that we're going to save. There's a large multi-trunk sea grape on the west side that we're also going to save. The coconut palms in the corners will be saved as well. Most of the cabbage palms, and there's a couple of royal palms that are out of scale with the site, those are going to be destroyed. The cabbage palms are not in very good condition. What I'm mostly worried about is having to transplant them two or three times on site, and I'm really concerned about their survivability anyways. So they will be replaced with new trees later on. There's the landscape plan. The elevation, oh, four, I think, L3, no, L4. From the roadway there are two exist, the next sheet. The two existing ficus trees, ficus altissima, we're going to save those. Underneath them, you can see them up there on the top elevation, and that's pretty close, pretty true to size as well. And they're both in pretty good shape for ficus trees. Underneath them, we're going to propose a number of shade-loving plants, philodendrons, green island ficus, and arboric, variegated arboricola. Could you go L2? The main entry is they're going to be posing a circular drive with a canary island date palm in the middle, seasonal annuals and green island ficus underneath it. The front of the house is, we're proposing six wild date palms of 14 feet of clear trunk. The, as you approach the main entrance, there are a couple of gardenia standards, Japanese topiaries, large Japanese topiaries flanking the entrance to the house. There are four layers of landscaping at the front elevation, the podocarpus hedge to the sill height in front of that variegated pitasporum, green island ficus, and then dwarf Confederate jasmine ground covers. There are a number of ligustrum tree standards flanking both sides of the front elevation, as well as the eastern side of the circular drive. The elevation, I'll show you. The bottom elevation here is from, roughly from inside that center island where the big, the big date palm is. You can see the wild date palms on either side, the Japanese blueberry topiaries flanking the entry element, bogan via standards in front of the windows. Any questions while I'm here? No? Okay, go, go back to L2, please. There we go. And I'll just walk around the house. On the eastern side, we have some, that's where we're going to have some of the relocated coconut palms in a cluster. Outside of the master bedroom windows there, we have, we're proposing some more sea grapes, excuse me, multi-trunk sea grape trees, dwarf oleander, and some more green island ficus for, to block the view. Again, in the lower southeast corner, existing coconut palms that are there. And as we wrap around the pool, we're going to put in new coconut palms with curved trunks haphazardly in the, in the grass areas there. Some of them will have bogan via vines attached to the trunks for color. Behind the pool are two wild date palms. Up against the house are a number of Montgomery palms, and again, the four layers of shrubs. Back on the west side is that existing sea grape you can see there, underneath it again, the dwarf oleander and green island ficus. Moving up, more sea grape, multi-trunk sea grape trees, and again, the dwarf oleander underneath them. Up in the upper left corner is that mahogany tree we talked about that's going to stay. And across the property line there, we're proposing, there's an existing ficus hedge on the adjacent property that's starting to get a little thin, but it's really tall, but we're proposing a new small leaf clusia hedge and cabbage palms at six feet on center to block that view. And that's about it. Any questions? No, I don't know.
How many trees are you going to remove that you're just going to destroy?
Oh, I don't know.
10? Well, you know, we do have the chart of the existing trees. I knew you're going to, you're going to move all the real coconut palms to keep them fresh.
There are about four leaf trees, four or five leaf trees, and probably a dozen palms. Some of the palms are pygmy date palms clusters, cabbage palms, like I said, that are not in very good shape. And most of the coconut palms we're going to relocate. The sea grape tree, there's a large sea grape tree in the existing front of the house that is growing horizontally, and it's probably, it'd be a real challenge to relocate a thing. It has steel posts that are actually holding up the branches, but so we decided to destroy that.
Are there any questions for landscaping? Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions or comments? Of the architect? Yeah, describe the roof for us.
The roof in a real true Anglo-Caribbean style would be a cedar shake roof, which would historically have been what was done, and the owners would really like to have that be the case for this home.
Can you show, you have a sample with you. You may want to show us.
Yes.
It'll stay the natural color. You're not staining it.
Like any roof in Florida?
Yeah.
The sun will possibly fade it a little bit, and, but it should remain that color.
Would it tend to silver out like?
It can silver a little bit, and that's historically-
So you're not being preservative on it, that will prevent or chill or prevent from aging naturally?
We're, the idea is to have it be in its natural state the way it was historically.
Okay, thank you.
How long will a cedar shake roof last?
About, with good maintenance, maybe just periodic cleaning and so forth.
Yeah.
The cosmetic part of it varies just depending on the unique wind conditions and sun conditions. I would say 20 to 25 years.
Do you have a sample of the windows also?
Yes, sure.
Thank you. And the garage doors?
Or the windows, this is the actual window type. It's a metal, a normal metal window, and then for the color, this, this will be the color. This is a very large piece. Obviously, the frames will be thinner. We want to make sure that we have a proper color for you to see.
Thank you.
Garage door will be, they're all, the window frames and the garage door will match?
If we can go back to the garage door image.
Do you have a sample of the garage door?
Pardon? We do not have a sample of the garage door. It's going to be a show. We need the renderings of the house. We're going to go the opposite direction, please. More, please. It's okay. It's okay. There we go. The garage door is the light blue to match the windows, yes.
So they are the same color?
Yes.
Just looks a little darker than the-
I've got a question on the special exception that's being requested. Is that on the, is that on the waterway where the, where the guest house is? Or whereabouts on the property is it?
Rita, if you could remind me what special exception is being requested?
Yes, it's, it's on the inlet.
So it's where the guest house is?
I don't know.
But where, where, on the western portion of the house?
Okay, because one of the, one of the things that in, in that section J, which it says that that any portion of the structure within 50 feet of the water, waterway shall not exceed one story, and isn't that a two-story?
There are good- Good observation. What happens is the portion is within there is only one story of the two-story portion setback.
Oh, so the two-story is at the 50-foot point or more? And we're talking, we're talking on the intercoastal waterway or on the inlet cut on the way in? On the intercostal, okay. Inlets or intercostal? The cut in?
Yeah. A little narrow.
Yeah, a little narrow cut.
Yes, on sheet A 1.0, it's delineated, and there's a portion that shows the two-story portion shaded dark and the one-story portion shaded lightly.
A 1-0, did you say?
Correct, in the upper left-hand corner of the diagram.
I see it.
And there's even a, there's a, a marker that says 25 feet, I believe it is, to the two-story portion setback.
So Trey, it meets, it meets the special exceptions in the code, is what we're asking.
No, sure. So, I mean, there are specific standards for a view that you would need to meet. I think Mr. Roach mentioned one of them that you were looking at, it can't exceed one story. So those are just things that would need to be met, and you would need to provide sufficient evidence for you to make that finding as part of your recommendation to the town commission. So, you know, the specific standards for a view or the reduced setback will not substantially alter the character of the waterfront in the immediate vicinity, including any other properties facing into the same cove or stretch of waterway. Reduction of the rear setback is necessary to ensure adequate buildable area, and the reduced setback allows for a more attractive architectural design and more practical home layout. So those are the things that you would be considering in approving that special exception.
Yeah, well, it probably doesn't fit that ensuring the adequate buildable area, but I mean, are we going to ask them to move the entire house 10 feet toward the east, toward the inlet rather than, yeah, seems a little aggressive.
What, what does the code on the blue windows?
Yeah.
Is there any code about using blue on the windows?
I don't think we have color. I don't believe color becomes a, or is addressed.
That's strictly up to whatever you feel is fitting for the, it's not restricted.
Yeah, I mean, there's not a prohibition against it.
There isn't, okay.
So the white, the window frames are all going to be white. Where's the blue go?
It's blue.
It's blue.
Yes.
Yeah, it's very, it's unique. It would be governed. I think the window frames are supposed to be white or bronze if they're on a-
I mean, if you're talking about the glass, your question about the glass, we don't, there's no prohibition against the darker color, but the frames-
It's the frame.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I should have been more precise.
So the white window frame that you showed us is going to be blue, not white?
It's going to be blue. There is, there is a vote from the town of Gulfstream on allowable color chart and the color that our contractor had received, and that's how, part of the process by which we selected the color for the window.
Window or window frame?
Window frame.
Window frame, okay. I thought we were restricted to just two colors on window frames, white or bronze or, you know?
That depends on the-
Architectural style?
Yeah.
Style.
Architectural style.
But are you telling me in this style, we are allowed to approve a colored window frame?
I know that we're, I don't know of any reason that it can't be a color.
Okay.
But the color is up to the board.
So it'll be the railing over the front door?
Everything.
The hearts, the hearts.
All the trim.
Correct.
All the trim.
And the garage doors.
To be honest and completely frank, the color in the scheme you've given us in the drawings is appropriate, but when you see it in real life, it's, it's- It jumps out a little. It jumps out at you more than it does in your rendering. And these beautiful, these rentals are gorgeous. I think the design is beautiful.
Sometimes that happens with color samples indoors rather than out and harsh, you know, good Florida sun. If there is a concern that it may be a little too intense in color, we could certainly consider reducing the intensity of the blueness, you know, to a slightly paler blue.
I think you, we appreciate that.
Yes.
Okay.
Or even a more muted gray blue.
Something that has a little bit of a gray blue in it. Let me confer with the owners. JR and Nadia, are you comfortable with possibly going to a slightly paler gray blue?
Is it light blue, I think would be?
Yeah, paler like. That would be fun.
Too bright.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, it, I think even when you see it on three garage doors, it's going to be pretty, pretty bright. I'm sure it will tone down over time just with the sun, but I, and we'd like to see some samples of down shades, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe a few samples, a few different samples.
Pardon? Okay, so that can, that can be supplied, would be possible for that to be something done outside of a hearing that staff could review and then bring to you, you know, outside, so that we wouldn't have to come back in a month to do it.
No, this is something that we've done before. Obviously, the, the color is going to be up there next week. This is going to be something that's done last. Pardon the expression, I think it's the Cat Lady's House. I think Canizaro, we had the issue with the shades there.
Yeah.
So we went back later on, and once that was sort of closer to final, we decided, the board rather decided on that shade. So we could certainly, if the board is looking at a recommendation to the town commission, you could also, you could either have that to be presented to them, or you could sort of, you know, reserve on that and say, we recommend that this be sent back as far as the window color for approval at a later date for the ARPB prior to issuance of a CO, something along those lines, whatever you're most comfortable with, but those are some of your options.
What's your lead time on ordering windows? You have plenty of time to order those windows.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, so I would think the consensus here informally is that we'd like it to be a softer blue, not even really gray. Do you like lighter blues and?
Um, I'm just thinking of something that's less punchy, you know, just something that's more muted. Because, you know, I also think if you have a house with blue windows, there might be a time when you grow rather tired of the color. And if it was more muted, it would be easier to live with. And then with the windows, it's an anodized finish, I'm sure. You can't just change that or paint over it if you get tired of the color. I would just suggest thinking, having a very long-term view.
We're open to bringing back some more samples, and we, and at that time, we'll bring some, probably some multiple samples to make sure that we can all agree on a color together.
The sea walls are all good already? Oh, okay. Oh. I was wondering, are you going to do the whole loop?
We spoke to them yesterday.
Okay.
And Vincent and C-Tech, we'll probably look at that before state.
Okay, comments?
But you may be doing some of that at the same time.
Yes. And I think we can still get the proper elevation, George would say, without the sea wall being complete, but it's really just going to be the plates are good. It's just really pre-capped and new batter piles. So we're just waiting to get-
How much grade increase are you going to have to?
About one and a half to two feet.
One and a half to?
Yeah.
The Rita, have we heard from the neighbors? We've notified all the neighbors, any comments from neighbors?
We had none at all.
And one other, there was a, a little piece of dirt, you know, at the driveway that, did we get all that title stuff worked out for you all or?
Yes.
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 I remember that was a year ago, they were looking for, okay, good. I don't know how it gets all. Oh, was it, oh, you had to buy it or something? Oh, God, all right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So you think the estimated time that you would get the approval for your seawall and the batter piles would be in February?
Well, we would be expecting to go in for, yes, February.
Okay.
We would be expecting to submit, well, say we were to submit December one. How long is Gulfstream out right now? Eight weeks?
At least, yes.
So we were to, you know, submit December one for demolition. We're eight weeks out from demolition.
Okay, the, the reason I ask is because that, the period of time, February is in the middle of the season. Okay, the, the season is, you see, December one through April thirtieth, so.
We understand.
And, and piles are prohibited during the season. So.
The contractor who's working on this, which is Mark Timothy, who's represented by George Beriso and Rocco here, they have built in Gulfstream before and are familiar with the regulations of Gulfstream.
Sure. Yep. The number of.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Gotcha.
Any other questions or comments?
I think it's very beautiful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Really beautiful.
It's a beautiful piece of dirt and gorgeous home.
If, then could we have a motion or motions?
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of a demolition permit to remove existing structures on the property except for the existing entry wall up here feature at the entrance.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, Ed Rita?
Mr. Dawkins?
Yes.
This is Jones?
Yes.
This is Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Yes.
And I'll make a motion to recommend approval of a special exception to reduce the rear setback from fifty feet to thirty-five feet as per section seventy, seventy-five J, rear setbacks for waterfront, waterfront lots in the core district.
Second.
Rita?
Mr. Dawkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Yes.
And I will make a motion to recommend approval of a level-three architectural site plan based on a finding that the construction of an eight thousand six hundred and ninety-nine square foot Anglo-Caribbean two-story, single-family dwelling with a two-and-a-half-car garage and swimming pool meets the minimum intent of the design manual and applicable review standards with the following condition. One, any minor modification to the approved landscaping shall be submitted to the town manager for review and approval, and any major modification shall be brought back to the ARPB for review and approval prior to the commencement of the landscaping.
I'll second.
What, we'd like to add a second, a second provision, if you would, Curtis, for the color.
Oh, and, and two, that the color of the window frames be modified to a more subtle blue than, than was presented at the meeting.
Frames, garage doors and railings.
Windows, door frames and railings, yes.
Would you like to recommend that come back for the ARPB?
Excuse me? To come back to the ARPB?
Yeah, for the revised.
Yes. And have the, the new sample color to come back and be approved by ARPB.
That's fine.
I'll second that.
Okay. Moved in second, Ed Rita, please.
Mr. Dawkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Beautiful. The meeting is December sixteenth, you saw that?
Yes.
And, and as Mandy suggested, I think it would be good if you didn't just bring one, maybe bring us a sliding scale of two or three from that.
No. Will do, thank you.
Can I also suggest gunmetal? I mean, that might be a risk.
We'll definitely take it. Thank you for the thought, but thank you under consideration.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any items from staff? Anybody on the board have anything they want to bring forth? Nope. The public is leaving, we're good. Okay, I'd say we're adjourned, thank you. Pretty home.